Okay.
Okay, we will call the meeting to order. And do our pledge of allegiance, please?
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I think we're just missing one who will be late and one who is late. We will show up soon. Shouldn't wait till they show up or just. Join up. Well, okay, so if I think the first thing we will do is the attendance sheet going around. Yeah, just thank you, Brandon. Did you get them? Okay, all right. We'll just keep sending it this way. Then send it back to you. This is the HSBC. After we approve the minutes, I think we'll do, we're gonna do a quick executive session. So let's take care of the attendance sheet. I'm gonna deal with this afterwards, Tom. Okay? I appreciate that. Don't forget. Thank you. Yep. And I hope that everyone have a chance to take a look at the minutes from October. They looked fine to me. I was not here, so I don't feel like I can say one way or another, but I have faith. Does everyone feel comfortable voting on the minutes?
Yeah.
Yeah, then I will make a motion to approve the minutes from the October 2022 meeting. Can I get a second? Thank you, Corey. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Any opposed? No? Great. We have approved the minutes. And with that, I will call, what do I have to say? Just make a motion? Okay. Yep. Great. I am going to make a motion to move the meeting to an executive session. Relative, relative, what is it? What do you say pertaining to a personnel matter, starting at 7:34? Can I get a second? All in favor? Okay, great. We are now in an executive session. And I will make a motion to resume our regular board meeting business. Can I? Can I get a second? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Here we go. Seven, 7:40. Very efficient executive session. Thank you, everybody. Okay, regular business. No, Francis, do we have a report from him?
I do have a report and also an action item. The report is Francis had sent email to me myself. Regrettably, I will not be able to attend your board meeting Thursday as I will be on at WLS some same time. In any case, there's very little report on the WLS front since my last briefing. Our WLS board last met on Tuesday, October 24th and devoted mostly to the consideration of the WLS budget proposals for fiscal year 22, 23, which is scheduled for formally approval by the board at its meeting on Tuesday, November 29, 2022. The rest of the meeting time was spent on routine housekeeping matters. Francis.
Thank you.
And I just have one other
Yeah.
action item.
Yeah.
The Westchester Library System and all of the 38 member libraries have a contract between each other and every year.
Yeah.
The contract, which is called the service level agreement for IT services specifically, is sent to each library director to be brought before the board. It's a pro forma document. The board in previous years adopted it. All the WLS libraries, you know, approve it. It's, it's just what is the agreement that goes on between both parties as we continue to work together and function. So I'm hoping that there could be a motion to adopt this document and, and then once adopted, I can sign it and we can send it off to the WLS executive director.
Do you feel comfortable about the document? And yeah, there's any, are there any points? Like, can you summarize?
Oh, just, it's just the
The typical, what we've been doing.
Rules that relate to IT services, that relate to payment, that relate to issues regarding disputes. Perhaps regarding the products that we receive. It's just a very pro forma thing. It's a document that was adopted in consultation between the WLS staff, the WLS board and the 38 library directors. Standard.
Okay. Any questions, anybody? No? Okay, then I can make a motion to approve this WLS IT, what is it, service level agreement? Right for the 2020, 2023? Is that yearly that we have to do this?
For 2023.
For the 2020. Great. Then can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Then we have passed that or approved that. Thank you. That's great. Okay, so that's pertaining to WLS. I don't really have anything to report for the president's report that I can think of at the moment, but that may change further down in the meeting. So we will move on to the director's report.
Thank you, Whitney. Thank you. Um, you know, folks, I'm just gonna repeat lots of what I've said previously. As you, as you know, we were lucky enough to receive two New York State Library construction grants. We submitted in August 2021. One is for the third floor renovation. One is for replacing all the air conditioning units at the Huguenot Children's Library. In past years, announcements for grant award would be made in June. Checks would arrive typically in September, October. This year was unusual. It was long delayed. The announcement was made in October. So we're hoping to receive our checks for these grants in the near future. And we're quite anxious to move forward, particularly with the third floor renovation, because there's lots of moving pieces. We need time to be able to order it. Supply chain is delayed. So the good news is the grants got approved and within the month. We're now hoping that checks arrive in a fairly timely fashion. In relation to our fire stopping and safety project, you folks know that we are moving forward. We actually had a a bid open, a public bid open. We had two responses. The architect is de-scoping the responses and hoping to have more to share with the board in the near future. That's that. You folks also are aware that our most recent grant that was submitted to the New York, to Westchester Library System for New York State Library Construction Grant monies were approved. Main Library was a noise, a project that would mitigate the noise issues in the building. And at HCL, it's sort of a generalized project that will help provide better organization in various areas and also improve the lower level, which has through success has become tired. That has been approved by the Westchester Library System. It is now going to the state of New York for dormitory authority in New York State Library. And we're hoping that this year doesn't repeat itself in regards to this grant. We're hoping that once again, there will return to a grant announcement in June and a check disbursement sometime in October of 2023. That's that. As far as the ARPA grant that the foundation applied for, you know, the city of New Rochelle was the very fortunate recipient of quite a lot of ARPA money. And there was a competitive grant program established by the city for nonprofits. And the foundation, in tandem with the library, applied for a grant of nearly $500,000 for essentially a bookmobile, but more than that with technology and ability to provide training and classes, et cetera, and, you know, via that vehicle in remote locations. The first round of awards were announced. The, this grant was not approved, but we were told that it's entirely possible when the second round occurs that this grant may be looked at more favorably and either funded in total or in part. So not great news, but we're still hopeful that something will, will happen in, in our favor. See what else. Yeah, Corey, it's well over $15 million. A lot of money. And what was interesting was that the, the grants administrator, who is somebody that's employed through Volunteer New York, had said that there's a lot of money. We're not really expecting that, that the grant applications will meet the limit of the money available. Didn't turn out to be true. There were far more grant applications totaling far more money than money was available, which is why they prioritized that. And they really did. We did have a conversation with them and they said, is a bookmobile absolutely crucial to your operation? And he said, it's not. We said that we think it's important. You know, outreach is important. We've made strides, particularly during the pandemic and understanding that not only do we expect people to come here, but going elsewhere. So, but I think they had some other grants that were probably more crucial.
Just to, just to chime in, the part of the parameters of this particular application process was, how are we going to, how will the library be more responsive post pandemic in hindsight for any future similar types of, you know, kind of broadly widespread circumstances that would prevent use of our space. And so the bookmobile makes such sense, right? The library will come to you. It can be used outside. You know, people won't have to gather and we felt it was very responsive in that regard, but I think we have enough other types of programs that they probably didn't feel like it was critical, which is probably fair, but I think it would be a great asset regardless and having time to, in this nice period we're in now, post pandemic, before something else happens, which we hope it won't, have establishing it as a regular fundamental part of the library, I think is, would be a great opportunity. But so we were still hopeful, but thanks to the foundation for their work and that application.
In particular Lynn Green and actually Lisa Itzkowitz. Our team worked together very collaborative and came up with a great, great grant proposal. So we'll keep our fingers crossed as we go forward. One thing that I do want to talk about is some very good news and it doesn't relate to a grant, but it relates to potentially a future and significant bequests. There's a gentleman who is a New Rochelle resident, was born here. His family, his grandparents, his name is Ed Pasuti. Some of you may, Pasuti. He was an educator here in, nice Italian name, Beth. Ed was born and raised here in New Rochelle and after he finished college and it served in the armed forces during the Second World War. He came back here and made the decision to be an educator.
With the Harvard first.
Right, and Princeton. So he's this really brilliant guy and he had many, he had many options.
Treasure trove of information and like, he just is like a history.
He's 96 years old and truly one of the most energetic, 96. We, we, Whitney and myself and Chris Allen and another foundation board member met with him and he was up and walking and talking. And then we went out to lunch and two hours later, the guy was still talking and all of us were ready to fall under the table. Really amazing, amazing guy. And Daniel, maybe you knew, he was a guidance counselor at New Rochelle High School. Maybe had retired by the time, you know, any, anybody that was a New Rochelle High School student. He was the head of the guidance department for many, many years. And so he is now obviously an elderly gentleman. He lives, not in New Rochelle, but in Rye, but has extraordinary commitment to New Rochelle. And he has, he has reached out to the foundation and wants to donate a significant amount of money upon his, you know, passing. And with the idea that it would go to the foundation and it would be used all over, but particularly for children and teen programs and services, because his whole life was really centered around young people in education and enhancing their opportunities. And so the foundation has been in touch with, with his, with his attorney. And we're at a point where, you know, this, this, the will, the document apparently is in place. And so what we would like to do is to have an event to sort of honor him and his family. But the agreement would really relate to that there could be no permanent naming done until, you know, the request is, is in hand. It, you know, it just is going to, has to be that way. And, and I believe he understands that, but I just wanted you folks to know there may be an event that will be coming up in the next few months. The foundation is of course the lead player with that. And when I have more, I'll share it with you folks. And it was for this event that maybe on the weekend won't be very long. I'm, I'll ask the board and possibly one or two people might be able to come and represent the library at, at this event. I'll be there. They don't, they don't have a date yet, but they're, they're working. Oh, thank you.
I don't know when it is, but I will make every effort. Just related to our work as trustees, we meaning the policy committee, so whoever that is, I think Rihanna, no?
I have it.
Thank you. Beth, Sarah and Lucille. So not Rihanna. Rihanna's like, no? Okay. And Lucille, we will be asking and giving some examples, asking you to kind of draft a naming policy. And we can we have examples. I have some from, from Lincoln Center, some things redacted.
And I think I sent you some.
We have some from other libraries that Tom found that are very helpful. And the way, you know, the things just to kind of keep in mind are that it, we're looking for like a template we can always turn to and then fill in certain parameters or conditions or circumstances, et cetera, that are unique to the gift or the donor or the timing or the amount or what have you. So there, there's like, just think about it like we're filling in some blanks, but we need some kind of, we, you know, I think we've come across several instances where we find ourselves kind of short because we didn't think ahead to make an agreement. And so we have no, there's nothing to point to if we need to reinforce something or, you know.
And what's this, the agreement is?
It's called a naming. It's a naming, a naming agreement, right? So if we're gonna name, name that, that row of chairs, the Beth Acacella, you know, row B, A. Right? Then what is the agreement? You're giving me $200 and you're gonna get that row? Like, what does that mean? You know, and what time does it have to happen? If you take your money away, can we take the sign off? If you give us more money, do we, you know, does it come with a party? Does it come with acknowledgement? Is it, is it, is your
Black?
Is there something on the website? Is there, you know, and so that kind of information, okay? And again, it can be customizable depending on the donor, but it will give you information to kind of familiarize yourself with the types of things to think about. And we're hoping between now and the next, we think we will have circulate, circulated something for everyone to kind of look at. And then again, it's a template, so it doesn't have to be like, nothing has to be set in stone, but what we need this for, obviously, you know, it's 96, so time is of the essence and to get something that we can use and turn to again and again. I think, yes, and thank you in advance for your work on this.
We never had anything?
Not really.
Not, in my time, we've never had a donation of that size. We've had some requests in the past that some were sort of unknown. Oh, we've never had a policy, which is, and I think it's, yeah, I think having a policy would be, would be really helpful because sometimes there are these really challenging situations where, where we're being given the opportunity to accept the donation, but the expectations from the donor may be not realistic relative to that. The rug. Yeah, that's a good one. Yeah.
Give them a rug, but they don't already.
You tell the story.
I just know that someone tried to give the library a rug and
Right. And they, and they kept on insisting that, that we should have this rug. And, you know, this rug wasn't one of those extraordinary rugs from the Middle East that was worth a lot of money. Right, right, that we could really kind of base something on. Right. It was, it was, yeah. It really did. And somehow we, somehow we couldn't make them understand that. It was a nice rug, but, you know, we weren't about to change, you know, the name of a space and take this rug that didn't, you know, I mean, I mean, we did it gently. I mean, because people are, you know, are generous and they want to make it.
Some kind of guideline.
So this will become our guideline.
A lot of organizations actually put in there that if something does not fit the mission and vision of the
Like a rug.
organization, like a rug, they are more than happy to give them referrals to organizations that potentially.
I, and I, but I don't want to over-obviate ourselves, but yes, that's a nice thing to do. Yes. Yeah. And I think that's just a human touch, but I don't know that we need to codify that in a, in a policy per se. But thank you.
Good idea, then.
Yeah. Here's what you can do with your rug. Yeah, someone might love the rug. That's what, that's great. Okay, thank you. So that's in relation to Ed's gift. Did we, are we allowed to say the amount or not really?
I, I could say, I think we could say.
I think you should say.
It's the, the donation will be $665,000, which is a nice sum.
The actual amount is $666,000.
Six, oh, thank you.
$66.
A lot of sixes there, which I bet a joke, I said, is that bad luck? But Ed is also, because he's so charitably inclined, he will be making two other donations of that same amount to other organizations in the city. Yeah. And, right. Was it the Boys and Girls Club?
I've never shone.
I think, I'm not certain. I know it's the Fund for Educational Excellence, definitely.
I thought it was.
Yeah. But, um. Yeah. So it's a significant amount of money for a man who spent his life, you know, helping to educate and guide, you know, young people here in the city. And so it's, just feels very appropriate. So we'll keep you all posted as things go forward. Yep, just quickly moving through, Thanksgiving Parade, of course, is not this Saturday, but the following Saturday on the 19th. I know Lucille has indicated that she's planning to march. I'll be there. Chris Allen will be there, representative from the Friends. And we have about four or five staff members too. So, oh, good. Anybody else?
I'm trying to.
Yeah. And you could bring your kids too, if you want.
The kids are in sports, so I'm just trying to figure.
It's, it's a really fun, it's a fun day. And you get a real sense of people are really cheering on the library, which is
I scream like, fuck!
Yeah.
Very fun. It's a fun way to like.
Yeah.
They had a float?
We had a float. We had a, that was, was really built in tandem with the Friends, the foundation, the partnership and, and some of the library board and staff. It was stored at Ward Acres and you know what happened to everything in Ward Acres? Yeah, so, 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 so the, so the float didn't make it and it was really pretty depressing. Where do you, that's, where do you store it? That's why Ward Acres was perfect. And if it was a building that was intact, we'd still have it here and now. Anyway, so no, no, you just, and, and, and basically as far, you know, we're supposed to check in at nine o'clock and I will be, I will be doing that along with our custodians who's gonna march. And we'll have a banner and you can hold it and walk around and just, it's pretty casual. It's fun. And you'll start at the Huguenot Children's Library and you make your way down North Avenue and you end up on Main Street and, you know, the area probably near Pintard in that area. and you end up on Main Street, and, you know, the area probably near Pintard in that area. Yeah, 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 yeah. It does turn, well, you know, well, that's great, they went down North Avenue. But in previous years, you you would turn. I don't, yeah. But we did, who knows, but, you know, yeah. So it's definitely. Oh, it's not gonna turn onto me, you don't think?
Oh, no, it never did.
Oh, it did.
Oh, I'm not, no, it's not last year.
No, but in previous years. Construction. Yeah. So anyways, if if you folks have the time, I know it's a busy time of year.
Lot marching at the library, she was not happy, but. That was, that was a couple of years ago, they were like, no, not, no irony and no anything. But that's what they do when they're just like, I don't know, they only read. And so I was like, all right.
It's a good problem to happen.
They keep the, really cutting.
Yeah, with books, I know.
Yes, think about it, but I'm like.
Maybe they're modeling.
That's what's tell ourselves that.
Yeah, I'd say I'm gonna go with the modeling approach. Um, I've got just a few more things before we move out of this. And one was in an email that I sent to you folks earlier this week. And that is a request for funding from our capital expenditure fund for the remodeling of the community relations office. And the total budget amount is $35,388.57. And the office has not been substantially modeled since the 70s. And a lot of the furniture from that time is there, as well as some donations that we're able to gather from a medical journal that was closing about 15 years ago. And when Barbara retired, she, of course, left and took her things. And we also decided to really redo that space, because not only did we replace Barbara with Lisa, but we have brought in Toby Sevres. We decided that we wanted a social media person in all in one space. It just made sense since they all work together. And we're not doing anything lavish, paint, we're putting down a pergola type of flooring. And we're working through the New York State contract to furnish it. And we really allowed our community relations staff and best know what they need. And they worked with a vendor that the Westchester Library System had used for their offices and that we had successfully used with our children's staff. And I, it won't be lavish, but you know, this is an important office. It's a place where many people enter into and have conversations about programs, et cetera. And it would be nice to give the the staff and the public a pleasant professional space to work out of. So it is $35,388.57. And the breakdown is, the furniture is 27. What's that? Oh, I did, I sent it in the email earlier this week.
There is not office today, and it needs it, and yeah, yeah. I read this, you know, when he said that, and agree that we need it. And I'm happy that you're doing it. And this is not, this isn't like, this is part of our capital.
Capital monies that we had set aside last October to reduce spaces, right? And 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 it's, you know, it really does need, and I have to say that our staff, our custodial staff has created an office for Toby with materials. You know, they they've worked with our community relations folks to empty out closets, to move things. So it's, we're, we're, I think we're in a good place, and and our staff has worked hard to get to a place where I think what we'll have is, it's not fancy, it's not lavish, but I I think it's needed.
Does anyone have any other questions? Okay, do you need a motion? Yeah, go ahead.
Where would they work currently?
Um, we're gonna try to work around it, we'll move them maybe upstairs to the tech services area. You know, what's interesting is because we've had so many projects in the building, and our custodians have been really good project managers. So there's a real, we have a sort of a rhyme and rhythm of how to, how to do it. We, we did it successfully. Our biggest challenge was the circulation desk where we closed for half a day. And, you know, our custodians built a temporary cirbisk, literally in half a day to to serve the public while they were working in that area.
And how long will the work take?
We think it will only take, well, we've got to wait once the, we have an approval. We think the furniture will take at least three months to arrive. And we're hoping from start to finish that it should be done in just about two months.
Wow, okay, so once the furniture arrives.
It shouldn't really take, it'd take very long. Painting, we're doing flooring, and and we're really anxious to get it approved now because starting in January, the salesperson is estimating that prices could go up 25%. So we've kind of, yeah, just, we want to get it in so that we don't have to deal with, not saying an unnecessary, but an additional charge.
Does anyone have any other questions? Then I can make a motion to approve the expenditure for the customer relations offices. Because what is it called?
Community.
Community Relations Offices for, in the amount of $35,388.57. Can I get a second? All in favor? Any opposed? Good, yay, new office.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. And when, when, at some point in the future, you'll say it was worth it, when you go in there, it'll look, it'll look good. I'm almost done, I just want to highlight once again, our amazing Friends group. Continue to staff our Friends store, receive lots of donations, manage it, turn around, sell it to the public and make money so that we can program and do all sorts of wonderful things. They are, their stores are open on Tuesdays, Thursdays and Saturdays. And their famous holiday sale has been announced. It will be on December 2nd and 3rd, and it will extend not just from the store, but it will go out a little bit further towards the area where the gallery is. And if you're looking for holiday presents, for books, other non-print things, you could find some really good buys there. So just wanted to share that. And a good amount to talk about in terms of the foundation. I want to remind board, everybody's invited to attend. Next foundation board meeting is scheduled for November 21st. It will be 7:30 in the room behind us. And of course, in person at long last. The Cocktails and Conversation Series is underway once again, which is really exciting. Dr. Amy Bass and Lynn Green and Teresa Leggoin do a fantastic job, year in, year out, making these great programs available to the community. And so, once again, there will be an event for Cocktails and Conversation on November 30th at 6:30 at Alvin and Friends Restaurant. And the, the, the highlight will be Megan Abbott, who is a New York Times bestseller, author, really, really good. And so I would encourage you folks to attend. If you do attend, I believe the fee is $60, but you get wonderful appetizers from Alvin's. I was there last night for a Rotary meeting and had an amazing meal. So, so, and two drinks, not just one, two drinks. So you get some value for your money. And you also support the foundation, and you get to hear Megan Abbott and see a lot of old friends, et cetera. So there is that, just almost done with that. They, the foundation, of course, is working towards some sort of event honoring the potential by quest of Ed Persoudi, and I'll share that with you when I have more information. But they also are working towards a program called Welcome to New Row Night, which I think they have tentatively scheduled for January 26th. And they're trying to connect with new residents, you know, and many of our developments have an event to talk about what's going on at the library, all the great programs and services that are available. I don't have anything more than a date. The foundation, yeah. So when I get more information, I will share with you, and if anybody can attend, that would be great. And and the offing is their future fundraiser that will happen sometime in the first half of 2023, and that is a game night at the library. So, you know, mini golf, some other things too as well, should be fun and raise money. And I am done. Let's see, I have a personnel report that's really brief. No action for the, for the board to take. But what I want to highlight, and I sent to your attention, is that, very sadly for us, our social media and video coordinator, Nikki Fudge, left, found a wonderful new job. But that means that we are in a position where we need to find someone to replace her. We work through the city civil service department, and the position has been posted. Since late October, it closes on November 28th. You have to be a New Rochelle resident, you have to have experience with social media, graphic design, you know, some other, you know, tasks, you know, website and some video recording too as well. So if you know anybody who you think would be a good fit, you know, let them know about the position, share it with your friends and family and contacts, so that's it.
Thank you. This indirect support?
Good evening, thank you, everyone. So October, if you have seen the recent newsletter from the school district, you would have known that the library was highlighted and featured for our work with the elementary schools and the class visits. So far in the month of October, over 400 children have come through the library doors. And we are waiting for hundreds more in the month of November. Children are given a tour, they participate in a scavenger hunt, hear a story, get their library card and check out their very first book. So this has been really exciting to see all this activity. And then to be featured in the school district's newsletter is also a great piece. The Halloween Parade drew scores of children and families. And Bobby Sinick, the head of children's, represented the library in a costume wearing, being panicked and bare, and he was really quite the hoot. After the parade, lots of kids came into the library for more programs and books. The Huguenot Children's Library continues to be a hotbed for activity as well with many of their programs, such as yoga tads and nature tales being oversubscribed. So we're really looking to see how we can have more, more versions of that program. Last but not least, we have applied to be a part of a pilot program called STEM Tales. And what this program offers is training and support for library staff members and participants to be a part of STEM programming.
Sorry, what was the name of that program?
It's called STEM Tale, STEM.
STEM.
Yes.
What was the second one?
Tales.
STEM Tales.
STEM Tales, right. And what it really does, it offers activities and program guides for families and children. And the best thing about this program is that they're also offering some stipends for families so that we can eradicate the barriers for attendance. So they could get some money for transportation or, and we can have some money for snacks and that type of thing. So that'll be really exciting. I think we're really poised to get it because we are the kind of community that they want to partner with. The Adult Services Department, we just received a certificate and commendation from the Helen Keller National Center for Deaf Blind Youth and Adults, because this summer we worked with a, with a young student who was, we served as an intern and worked on various projects here in the Adult Services Department. So I think the school was very impressed, and they sent us this letter. In addition to the Helen Keller School, we've also been working with the the Helen School for several years now, and we've employed several of their students in many volunteer capacities. We have also been looking at our technology class offerings. We just launched a survey and now looking at all the data to see what kinds of classes and what kind of hours our patrons are interested in. So we are looking to launch a new schedule in the winter or early, early January 2023. Last but not least, we have finally moved out of the post-COVID phase and launched our Abraham Bag Lunch Program. And we had eight people come to that, which is pretty exciting. And their first book was Z, a novel of, Zelda Fitzgerald by Therese Fowler. And then in December, they will come back for a discussion of Dr. Shivago. So I guess they'll get a full two months to read that book. The teen room continues to be very active. They are energized with all the different programming, including gaming, VR experiences, craft and food programs. And this past October, the most popular program in the teen area was the Halloween candy sushi making. So that's been fun. Our circulation department, what we are seeing is every month, we are seeing new library cardholders. In October, we had over, we added over 700 new cardholders, but about 529 coming from class visits, but still a pretty significant number in terms of adults. The circulation team has also been adding new items to checkout, video games and ukuleles. We just added four new ukuleles to our lending collection. While this is a small collection right now, we are seeing a growing interest in it. So hopefully next year, there'll be some more things added to that collection. And soon we'll be circulating Wonder Books, and Wonder Books are sort of the new age audiobooks. It's books with an MP3 and not just, not the cassettes or the the other kind. So that will be exciting to to have. And last but not least, our end of our, we are launching a What is Your Favorite Book that You've Read This Year campaign. So we're asking our staff to share their favorite book. And we're gonna be doing a big social media push with videos and reading lists. So if you have a title, we'd love to hear from you. You can tell us what it is and be part of our.
I'm so happy you're doing that. I want to know what all the people who work here think about the books here. I love, I mean, I go to Barnes and Noble for birthday presents, okay? So, so you know, and they have little cards.
Yes, we're gonna be doing that.
Recommendations, and I love it, I read all of them, like, I don't care, I want to know what he thought, you know?
Yes, and what is, yeah, what else is Brian like? So, yeah, no, we're, we're gonna be doing a whole, we're, we're getting our volunteer to shoot a little video for us, and we've started collecting photos and titles. So it'll be great to to get some of your contributions as well.
Yeah, my gosh.
Sounds like a tough choice.
I, I'm like in the middle of five books right now.
I, I will, I will send, I will send everyone a reminder, yeah.
Thank you, that's amazing, thank you, Elizabeth. Thanks for that.
Oh, and Tom, I also wanted to mention, we have also added to your packet kind of a statistic sheet, so if you take a minute, you can see how we've been doing in terms of our interactions and our materials checkout.
Right, we, right, we, I had asked Elizabeth, yes, we had had that as a typical part of our packet prior to the pandemic, and then pandemic occurred and lots of things stopped. And with the arrival of Elizabeth, I asked her to take that on. She produced this document, and from this meeting forward, you will get a document that will provide information about activity levels in the building, in addition to all our anecdotal great stories.
Yeah, it's for the month, yes, right. It's just for the month, so every month you'll get, and then we will do a year to date.
Thank you for giving us a comparison.
Yes, right, yes, because we also need to know how we've, we've grown and changed and where we need to to make some adjustments. Oh, yeah, sure, I, I think it just forgot to print. Yes, right, right, sure.
But I do have to say, my daughter, she gets permission to.
Yes, yes.
Wait a minute, Daniel. You're sending the wrong message with your family. She gets that.
Yes, I know.
You know, I have to say, it's really exciting that we connected with the school district. Nate Adams, who is the MBK guy, he's doing a great job, along with Eddie Castro. He's worked with our children's staff and Lisa. He's worked with our children's staff and Lisa Itzkowicz. And the goal is for every kindergartner to come to the library, get a library card, be introduced. And, and what has stopped in the, us in the past is transportation. But they, these fellows got the support of the administration and it's happening and it's wonderful. They have a ban or a bus, right? Or sometimes they walk if they're lucky or unlucky enough to live within, uh, walking distance or go to school within walking distance. But it's really exciting to see the classes come in and out. And honestly, it's the school district with, um, um, those two fellows is supported by, oh, God, Nick Cracco, who, um, is the, a school district, a person sort of in charge of that whole, um, e- effort. They made it happen and our staff was there ready and willing and able to, to really, um, to capitalize on that. So it's great.
Thank you very much. Stuff to feel really good about. Anything else? Okay, we will move on to our committee reports now. I have a lot of points, but I'm talking about committee, so. Um, so we will start with budget committee and to refresh our memories, that is Whitney, Cory, Rhiannon, and I am the chair this year of budget plan. We don't have anything to report, Cindy, but we will be meeting starting in January. That's when the budget starts and we'll meet with Jean and Tom and review, what we'll need to share with the public and, you know, budget stuff in a row. Um, start sharing it with public, uh, here in our board meetings and probably starting in March, I believe. And then we have our, um, approval in April.
Typically, I think the board, um, the board likes the, the school district that is always is in favor of a March approval. But April can, can work and of course, the election will occur on the third Tuesday in May, in twenty twenty-three.
So, so probably we'll start to share, um, um, word wide in February then. And we may even want to think about having a meeting in December just to see where we are. So move everything back a month from what I just said. Buildings and grounds.
Buildings and grounds hasn't met yet, but we should be meeting next week. Right, so check that and we're going to set something up Tuesday or Friday.
And also, by the way, that committee, Sarah, is Sarah, Whitney and Lucille. So we're looking at Cory.
Because we were on it last time.
We shifted. Yes, right, we're, we shifted things around. You're on special projects, um, and then the two.
We can resend out the, um, the assignments.
I know, it was.
Because I bring it with me at every meeting because I can't remember either.
Yes, you're, yes, special projects. Daniel, Daniel, Beth and Cory, a special project. Okay, so that's buildings and grounds. Next week, we'll report out our meeting, hopefully Tuesday or Friday, we're meeting.
Yeah.
Um, and, um, community relations. And by the way, that is Rhiannon and Daniel and Beth. Yeah, make sure you all know.
So our committee has not had a chance to meet yet, but we're going to. Um, there were a couple of failed attempts, but we'll, we'll get it done. I had a chance to meet with the, um, community relations team at the library. Um, today I met with Lisa and Toby and Denise, which was great. And just to see how they would like our involvement to be, how we can be most supportive. And so that's going to be an ongoing conversation and they know they can reach out to me. Um, you know, Lisa said she was, she would love somebody, a brainstorming partner, so to bounce ideas off. So she'll, and you know, reach out to us if she wants to run something by us. She did, they did have a few requests that they asked me to pass along. Um, I think none of this is new and most of us are probably doing it already, but we can probably do. I know that I can step up my game for sure. So, um, social media, they ask that we, uh, they create so, such great content that we as trustees, um, interact with our content, that we, that we like it, that we share it, um, that we just kind of add our audiences out, you know, our, our eyes, our audience's eyes on their content. I can definitely do a, a much better job with that. Um, they also said if, if we can help provide content, for instance, I'll do that in a minute. Could we take a picture of tonight's board meeting, like a selfie, that they can then post on Instagram the next day and say, hey, board met last night, discussed, la, 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 just. So anything that, you know, anytime we think that we can add some content, that's very welcome. And, um, obviously any of the events, if we attend, take our own pictures, share them ourselves and they can share them on, on their Instagram, Facebook page. So, um, just kind of help, um, drive the visibility, um, of, of their efforts. And a sign up for the newsletter, yeah, I'm sure we all receive the newsletter. But if, if we have me at it, I encourage others to sign up for the newsletter. Um, and then on the social services side, um, all this great, um, programming, there's always volunteers needed. So if there's any, you know, if, if, if you think there are any special talent that you can contribute to, um, some of these things that they're doing, just let Denise know and she, she always welcomes volunteers. So that was kind of what came out of the meeting today. And hold on, let me take the selfie. I promised I would. Get in everyone. Wait, Cory.
We need to get you to stick. There you are.
Something like that exciting. So much space between.
I know, okay, well, we'll get better.
Yeah, maybe we don't have.
I do have to say that Nina and Jess Michael was really good. Even more than that. She would post videos and like after meeting conversation with the board, what'd you think of the board? I mean, live video feed.
We got to step up.
No, she was like, look at her page and go back to, what was it, twelve, twenty seventeen, right? Sixteen around that time, I mean, that's when Damon was on the board. I mean, they were like, and it was before we were streaming. She was streaming.
She was streaming before. Right, like, on her Facebook page, she had.
I'm, I'm terrible at social media, but I'll try to. I am, I really am too. Um, but all right, we'll figure something out. Yeah, we can get better at this.
Thanks for the nudge.
And, um, I can just quickly share some of the activities from the marketing and, um, the social services team. Uh, there were, it was a busy month again, October and the first week of November. Um, the Friday night concert series, um, continued as did the film series and the Hollywood film series. New Rochelle Plays Hollywood Film Series. Um, you know, I'm not going to go through all, every single one, but, um, you know how, how busy the team is and how many great programs, um, they provide to the community. Arts Fest wasn't stand out in the, uh, past few weeks, um, with all so many great events across the whole city. But the, the library, uh, participated and had, um, great, uh, programs that were well attended. Um, music from Copland House, for instance, had over fifty people. So, so, and the scavenger hu- hunt was back. And so, so, uh, uh, played a big role in the Arts Fest, um, overall. Day of the Dead celebrations. Um, uh, also multiple events that were very well attended, um, as were some of the virtual programs and that we continue to offer, uh, upcoming, this upcoming weekend is going to be very busy. The second film of the New Rochelle Plays Hollywood Film Series is the Sunday. Um, Saturday is, uh, the Wayne Henderson sex test. Badly, there's six people, six people. And, uh, the, the kids' books and kindness, a celebration is also on Saturday. Um, so this weekend is a busy weekend. And then the Sing Your Heart Out performance is the following weekend on the Sunday, the, the twentieth. I'm an adult singing group, um, that has been practicing all October and is now, um, practicing twice a week and will perform on Sunday, the twentieth. The community relations team has put a lot of work into different ways of reaching out into the community. They're doing meet and greets for the downtown, the new downtown residents. And, uh, reaching out to local buildings, visiting the buildings, trying to, trying to, hmm? Yeah, trying to talk to, uh, um, the concierge, get to know them and, and promote the library that way. Um, they represented the library at the treat fest and had a very, very busy table. Um, that, that led to, there was a raffle and it led to bringing a lot of people in the library because they had to deposit their raffle ticket, uh, in the children's library. So a lot of people came in that way. And a lot of other ways to connect with the community and promote the library and, and try to get people into the building. So have been very active during that. We talked today about an idea about writing personalized postcards. So we'll kind of be as, as a way of introducing ourselves to the new, maybe people moving into the buildings. And if it's, we found that personalized postcards are really effective. So trying to invite people personally into the library. So that's an idea that we tossed around today. And, um, the help and learning center, Denise is very active with the one-on-one, um, help that she's providing and in the whole range of services, healthcare and digital services, Medicare open enrollment. Um, it's a long list of things and Denise is just crushing it, meeting with people and helping them. So that's the report for this month.
Excellent. Thank you. Wonderful. Finance committee, finance committee is Cory, Rhiannon and Sarah. I am. Connect. Yeah, yeah.
Jane.
Yeah, she's, she's writing, she's, she's just writing stuff down. Great. Yeah, but I, we can, um, that's fine, we can figure out how we want to do that. And also just remember putting the B in your bonnet, that Chuck Burke has offered for as long as we need him, um, to serve just like Deirdre did, just like others have as advisor. And you can, you know, we can ask him, you know, just, yeah, just bring, bring him in like the way that we have the CROC committee. And he was so familiar with everything and he can help provide continuity and the, the kind of institutional knowledge that will be very helpful for all of us kind of taking over. Because he, he has big shoes to fill, but I know you can fill them. So, um, so that's great. Thank you. Um, personal committee, Lucille's not here. And anyone else have anything to say? That's me, Daniel and Lucille, we, I haven't met, so, uh, we can, we'll put a pin in that unless you have anything to say. Nope, nope. Um, policy committee, Beth, Sarah and Lucille, nothing right now, but next month you will. Was there another policy that we needed, um, the policy committee to look at? That we talked about, well. Yeah, um.
The signature thing? No.
No, that's, we'll take care of that. Oh, I, that actually is something, um, pertaining to, I don't know if this is going to turn into a policy committee matter. Do we want to talk about our discussion that we had with, um, with the, um, school district treasurer pertaining to some of the banking issues that? Uh, well, here's the, here's the deal. We left it on the table about the res- resolution that, um, authorizing them to be treasurer and deputy treasurer, correct? We never signed a document because we can't find, um, any contextual background for why we would need to do that. We understand that what, what they're trying to do, I believe, is kind of create some connection between this document that, that requires the library president to sign off on their, the treasurer and the deputy treasurer to be signatories on checks, which makes perfect sense. And that is practice I'm familiar with. But the resolution is kind of floating out there and it's not really connected to anything other than the bank and their request. And we can't find anything, um, we have to, let me restate that. We need to investigate a few areas. One of them is our bylaws, one of them is the school bylaws. One of them is the kind of municipal law pertaining to school board libraries and any charters therein, any types of, um, memorandums of understanding that may have been created. And if we don't have one, we are looking to create one. And I think that is helpful, um, just in general to remind ourselves why we are a school board library. What does that mean? What is the obligation of the treasurer of the school board to us? And what is our obligation to them? And how does that relationship work? And, um, we had a great conversation, they were lovely. Um, we have a bunch of actions to take and we will be meeting with them again in a month. Um, but this is just kind of specific to that one resolution, which.
We did vote on something.
We did. Well, we voted on this signatory that, that I will sign and that's correct. That was the right thing to do and thank you. I wasn't here, but I, I, I will take the action that you voted on and I would have voted the same way. Um, this is a separate matter, but related, but it's, we shouldn't con- o- overconflate them until we understand exactly what it needs to be. So it could be, um, just, just put, just stay tuned because we need, um, Tom and staff and team are looking into, looking into this through various channels and then we will kind of report back. Any questions? Um, and there's some more on that, which I will talk with Cory about as the finance person. And policy committee and special projects, special project is Daniel, he's chair. Thank you very much. The strategic plan, that's right. So I believe Elizabeth is the person, um, that is the head implementer and monitor of, the keeper of the strategic plan as far as implementation. And I think if you need and include Elizabeth and talk about what's being done and what does she think? And that will probably feed into some of the buildings and grounds work and some of, probably some more special projects and, right? So that's a, that's a good point. Yeah, good point. Thank you. Good. There's no public. Sad, sad face, that may be one of the first times since I've been here that there is no public. So with that, there's no public discussion, um, any questions, comments, thoughts? Then I will make a motion to adjourn. Can I have a second? Great, all in favor?
Aye.
You can do it, Tom. That was Cory. Thank you. Meetings adjourned. Thank you so much.